Welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council for Wednesday, July 20, 2016. Can we have a roll call and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
No problem.
Roll call. It's Councilmember Chu.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Hillmer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harof.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. If you can, please rise and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Tonight, we have no presentations, so we'll move on to number three, which is approval of the consent calendar. Do I have any council member who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion? Is there anyone from the public who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion to approve the consent calendar.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Great, we're on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, my regular progress report on the odyssey that is rehabilitating City Hall. We're getting much closer, but had you been here a few days ago, our refrigerator and some other things were living in this room. They are now where they are supposed to be, in our combination central office point kitchen area, so we're hoping the mail and other central office point items will migrate there shortly as the final touches are put on that. We haven't had a meeting here since the 4th of July, so some of the council members got to enjoy watching the parade from the balcony. We still need to do some touch-up work out there, but you can now see what the look is that we were trying to restore out there. One of the things that we're debating and want to talk to the heritage folks about is the true old look for that railing was a paint job, but if you go out on the balcony, it's just a beautiful piece of wood that they've installed. So we're hoping to stain it close to the color of paint so we can still retain that green and that really nice look of that wood, or compliments to the contractor. He put in a little extra to find a really nice look for that balcony. I think he understood that it's the face of our building. Also want to let the council know that we are in the process of recruiting for the library director position, and we've had a lot of folks sort of asking us what's going on there. So we closed the applications. We do have a pool of applicants that we're reviewing now and anticipate doing interviews in August, and if all goes well, and we have a suitable candidate sometime mid-fall, we hope to have a new director on board. And so if folks are asking about that, that's the current timetable that we have in place. And then I have had a lot of folks sort of asking about maintenance around town. We got hit with unusual circumstances that we had three vacancies occur all of a sudden on our maintenance team. And if folks don't know, we do our maintenance with six in-house crew members, and then we supplement from time to time with outside contractors. And due to retirements and some folks getting jobs elsewhere, we suddenly found ourselves 50 percent down in our maintenance crew. So it's not a condition we wanted to have some of the medians in parks fall a little bit behind. We actually have made offers now to three new maintenance workers, and we've been bringing contractors. And I'm hoping to start to really see the results of that effort in the upcoming weeks as we get back to a regular maintenance schedule. I think it really is just sort of an oddity and aberration in terms of the timing of what happened, and I think we'll move forward nicely from here. And then lastly, I put a memo on the dais for you to take away, which has some follow-up to a community meeting that we held last week relating to the re-striping and reconfiguration that's occurring on Magnolia Avenue north of the intersection with Bonner Road. A lot of questions at the meeting about what we would do next, and I've included here the coverage from the media about the meeting. Generally, folks attending the meeting had a lot of concerns and, for the most part, were opposed to what we were doing. They had a lot of questions about how we will move forward from here. For folks who aren't aware, I think all the councils are aware, Julian Skinner, our new director, had the paint for the striping done with a more temporary traffic paint that could be removed if necessary. If we had done the full-blown elastomer-type surface, then you'd have to grind it out. So that paint is traffic paint. It'll last the duration of our evaluation period and into the future, but it gives us an opportunity to take a look at what's going on. And that's what we want to do now, is see if this initial change we've made has an impact, what that impact is. So you'll see in the memo that one of the things I've indicated is we will commission a follow-up traffic analysis to see what the effect has been of the work that we put in place so far. That analysis will take place in the fall after school gets back in, so that we have traffic conditions that are normalized to what we analyze, but I was trying to analyze when school's in, and when weather is consistent and appropriate, because we know weather patterns affect traffic. So that's one thing we'll be doing. The second thing is, it struck me and Julian at the community meeting that it's been a while since we've done sort of a comprehensive explanation of the Bonner Bridge project itself and all of the many mitigation projects that are taking place related to it. For folks who've never really read our material, there's five categories of mitigation projects under the bridge, and then there are elements, or what I might call sub-projects, in those five categories. There's quite a bit of activity beyond just constructing the bridge. And so at your meeting in August on the 17th, staff will give you a presentation as an information item. Go through the whole thing and just give you a chance to see in one comprehensive format what is the Bonner Bridge project, what are all the mitigation projects, what's the status of the different things that are going on? And in the meantime, that same presentation, we're building into what we'd call a landing page on the website, so that folks can go to one page, they can follow links to what interests them about what we're doing under the bridge project. And then we're also, our contractors operating a webpage related to the project, so we're working with the contractor to up the amount of information there. I do want to remind the council that the contractor, part of what they're doing, it's similar to what we do with Alexander Bridge. You know, we get a lot of folks that are interested when the construction starts and exactly what's going on. And the primary purpose of the contractor's website is to give them a venue to keep the public up to date on what they're doing, why they were doing a certain thing on a certain day, what the project status is. Our job on our website will be to give people pointers to all the different documents and approvals that have occurred in the past, and also point people to status updates that they are seeking. So that's what we'll put in place. And then we anticipate that we will come back to you probably in October or November when we've had a chance to look at the traffic defect, and we've had a chance to talk to our project team about this particular mitigation measure that has led to the decision to do the reconfiguration of Magnolia. And for the benefit of folks who haven't had a chance to look at our material in depth, what our requirement is, is to offset the stormwater and runoff implications of the impervious surface of the bridge. And that's a big mouthful to say. The bridge has a certain size, the new bridge has a certain size, and we have to find projects within the area of the bridge that the Regional Water Quality Control Board deemed as having merit to offset the impact of rainwater hitting the bridge and other water hitting the bridge, and then running off into the creek and carrying in that runoff, you know, oils that have fallen on the bridge, debris that's on the bridge. To achieve 100,000 square feet, we actually have about four different items that combine to reach that. The primary core project, which has received a lot of support from the Hillview community and a lot of support from the county through their flood control mitigation, is a series of pipes to create more of a retention process for water running down off the hills that today overwhelms the Hillview storm system. That gets us a little more than half of that 100,000. And so then we have these other projects to find the rest of it. The one that's causing the consternation represents about 11 percent, 11,000 square feet of this offset. And so we'll look at whether we can find another 11,000 square feet and what that would look like. Project team really struggled to get to 100,000, so I want to caution folks that it's not a simple task. We had a lot of folks at this community meeting calling for reengineering the bridge project itself so that we would reduce that. And that opens up a huge host of issues, the least of which is the one that I talked in the immediate moment to the public about, which is jeopardizing the grant money that's paying for the bridge, because we're up against deadlines to put this out to contract and get somebody building the bridge. But it also, I don't think a lot of folks understand just how many regulatory agencies have a bite at this project. And they've all at some times sat in their room with us and with Caltrans, talking about what is acceptable to them that'll allow us to move forward with their particular interests. And the bridge project itself, at this point, is such an intertwined and complicated mesh of policy interests and goals to get all those approvals and to get the sign-off for the funding that to try to reengine their bridge now would bring the entire thing to a standstill. It would be much better, we have one mitigation measure that folks are concerned about, that we try to find an alternative to that mitigation measure. What I want to caution the council about, and I wrote in this memo, and will post this on the website for folks, we may have to pay more, we may not be able to apply the grant to the alternative. So we'll bring you that as a cost element, and you can look at this as a cost-benefit question, and that's what we'll bring to you. So sorry, a little longer, more technical, my usual city manager report, but I wanted to have that information, know we are working on it. We took everything we heard very seriously, we took copious notes, and we will be moving forward in the background to bring you an item that I think will allow you, with the public present and giving you input, I think allow you to make an informed decision.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of the city manager?
Just a quick comment. First of all, I thought that you and Julian did a terrific job at that meeting. Catherine and I were both present throughout, and Julian in particular, I thought, just was terrific, given the newness of his position or his role in being in a meeting that was challenging, given the level of public interest and attendance. I just thought it was, I thought you both did a really terrific job. And I do think that although there were some concerns about, raised about the bridge itself and the design of the bridge and how that may be driving some of the mitigation, my sense certainly from the overall tenor of the meeting, is that's not the primary concern. The primary concern really has to do with that one mitigation on Magnolia. So I'm really encouraged to hear what you've said tonight, that we'll be taking a hard look at that mitigation and exploring options to really create an opportunity to maintain, if not enhance, the level of service for traffic going down that road. So that was the big takeaway I came from that meeting, and not, "Let's go out and redesign the bridge."
If I could just say, Mr. Skinner, Julian Skinner, our new director of policy, had, when he came on board, he had a vacation planned for now, or he would be here and I would be able to compliment him directly. To take on the challenge of that magnitude of a community meeting after four and a half weeks on the job was really stellar, and he did a fantastic job, very patient, and I hope folks who were there feel he heard everything they said, took it in and addressed what he could in the room. And he's very committed to being out in the field and meeting with folks who want to show him things out there.
That was very obvious, and he was unruffled by any of the comments and very clear and succinct, and I really appreciated that, considering he's only been here less than five weeks to take on such a big explanation like that.
Well, and just to follow up, and I just want to also thank you again, Dan, for the role that you played. Julian obviously played a significant role in the presentation, but to make sure that the public understood the process that the city's gone through previously, even though that's not always attended to by members of the public, it was important to remind folks that this has been a long process. It's really focused on the bridge, and if we have some things that we need to do to improve the process in terms of the mitigations and adjusting it to make sure that there's a minimum impact on the community, that's terrific. But this is a good bridge project, and I'm happy to see it go forward.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a question. For people who weren't able to attend, did you have at least an audio recording? I know that there was a video made by a member of the community, but usually, or sometimes those are edited, so I'm not sure if that's a trustworthy source.
We have an MP3 we made, an audio recording. We haven't had a chance to really be sure that it's clear throughout, so we're still going through and just making sure. If you have that kind of meeting, the dynamics of folks projecting their voice, it can get a little tricky, but at least we'll have something. I think definitely you can hear the presentation, and then the actual slides from the presentation are up on our website now. I think what's already been posted was someone who was using an iPad, which isn't necessarily the best device. I've seen some folks do some great jobs with their iPad and iPhone to film one of our meetings, but you can get a little dizzy when they're wheeling around to pick somebody up visually. There was a gentleman who had brought an actual video camera, and Shannon O'Hara helps me and is doing a lot of our communication work, asked for his contact info, and he did say he would provide us with his video, so we're hoping to be able to provide that to the public.
Great, thank you.
Great. Any other, yeah, sure, Dan?
Two quick ones. Two quick questions. What's the order of magnitude cost of the existing mitigation as proposed?
I don't have-
The one on Magnolia?
I don't have that specific issue at hand, Dan. I'd have to get it for you.
10 to 50?
I'm going to say to reengineer it is probably 50.
No, I mean not to reengineer it. What's the proposed cost of as proposed?
Oh, the proposed payment on both sides.
You know, including what's the grants going, is it?
Including the grant money.
A million dollars?
Oh, no, no, no. No, it's probably just clearing into the six-figure mark. It's not, you know, that's not counting the engineering, that's the actual project implementation. I'd have to go back to look at what we spent already to do with the engineering.
And is the standard for the mitigation restoring to a natural state area within public property?
So without getting into deep detail, I'm not the engineer on the staff.
Just in concept.
Yeah. This particular mitigation measure is about reducing the amount of impervious surface in vicinity of the bridge. That has two things. One is it reduces the amount of surface that's collecting oils and other debris that then eventually makes its way into our soils and into the creek. The other thing this one is doing is essentially creating more space in that corridor for water to just land on naturally.
In that corridor, meaning some defined, what's the corridor?
So the city and the different regulatory agencies looked at what, in each of these impacts, they looked at what was it, a reasonable proximity to the bridge to consider, and that corridor was identified mutually by the city and the Regional Water Quality Control Board, as being, that corridor being Magnolia in vicinity of the bridge, being an appropriate area to look at for mitigation.
So what, is it a diameter around the bridge or some distance from the bridge?
It's not that precise, and I don't, I won't pretend that I'm the right person to answer that question.
The only reason I'm asking is, could the mitigation be on public property, just as a question, informational question? As opposed to, is it limited to take place within a publicly-owned property?
As opposed to a privately-owned property?
Yeah. I could, just as a wild notion, could Hillview-
I don't know the answer.
Could Hillview residents combine their resources and create a mitigation alternative?
I honestly don't know the answer to that question.
So, Dan, I think these are-
I'll take that one back.
Yeah, these are questions-
That's my last question, thank you.
But those are probably some good starting points for the August 17th presentation, so we can make sure that information's there.
I just want to know what the boundaries of this look.
Anything else?
I do.
Sure.
How's the filming going?
Sorry, I didn't-
Hang on. How is the filming going?
With everything else going on. So, and for the benefit, not everybody in the community may know, you might have seen an article on the Marin IJ that Netflix, and it's actually Netflix and Paramount TV are in Marin filming a television show based on a book called 13 Reasons Why. Most of the Marin sites are in San Rafael, but one of the sites is here in Larkspur. It's actually in the Heather Gardens neighborhood, and they did their first shoot over the last weekend, and we had only one person who really had a strong complaint about it. We had some good feedback. Folks wanted us to try to do things a little differently the next time filming takes place in the neighborhood, but those were constructive criticisms, and the people who gave them to me said overall they were still okay with what had taken place. So they do plan on returning one or two more times this year as they finish filming this season. I have speculated that they really like the Heather Gardens neighborhood because knowing some of the other locations, San Rafael, Heather Gardens probably is giving them a lot of nice neighborhood shots of a suburban Marin neighborhood, and I think that's probably really helpful to them. My compliments to them on selecting a property that abuts the schools, because they were able to put a lot of their staging out on school. They had their trucks, big trucks, were all parked over at San Andreas High School. All the catering, all that, they did all that out of the neighborhood. So the main impact of the neighborhood were the lights and generators, and then traffic impacts. And they are paying for the police that are out there, if anybody asks. We don't pay for that. The police are being paid for to control the traffic and the scene by the film production, so.
I went by the shoot site about three times on Saturday just to check it out, and it was really nice to have that San Andreas parking lot, because all of that large equipment over there meant that it didn't impact the neighborhood parking or anything at that time, so. But I think we do need to learn about how to reach out a little bit more to the neighborhood for the next time around.
We're working on that now.
Yeah.
And again, I think the residents gave us some great ideas on how to reach more of the neighborhood, and then-
What did they give, what was one of the recommendations? Just curious.
We did four different touches out to the neighborhood, and each one of them had a different radius, and sort of broadening the radius of all of them was probably, I'd say, the theme. You know, folks, some folks were touched most easily by Nextdoor. Some folks were most touched by getting a letter that had the city's letterhead on it and recognizing that as coming from them. Some folks liked most getting the hand-delivered notice from someone from the production team. That happened a couple days before. Before this all started, when we were considering the approval, in the approval process, Paramount also did door-to-door, and if folks were home, talked to them about it, got their feedback and their concerns. And so it's more broadening, just broadening out that, so a little less surprise, I guess, for everybody in the neighborhood. You know, communication today does take multiple touches and multiple formats to really get to everybody. We're a little fortunate that that's actually our most saturated Nextdoor neighborhood in the city, is the highest usage in the city. So we do know when we shoot something on Nextdoor in Heather Gardens, we're going to hit a lot of folks, and that was really helpful, because that got us, helped us get word out very early that this was going on.
It was just a surprise.
Yeah. We will be at a future meeting, bringing you a full-blown film permit program. We have, kind of like a lot of cities, we have kind of a very modest program for photo and film, and if this is going to happen more, we need something a little more detailed. And they're telling us they think their show's great and going to get renewed, so if nothing else, they're going to be here a few more times.
Oh, boy. Great. All right, thank you very much. So we'll move on to council member reports and comments. Would anybody like to begin? Yes.
Thank you, Mike Norton, for this. These are brilliant. Thank you.
He's showing the baseball-style cards of, if anybody from the audience didn't see that, that have all of the officers for the Central Marin Police Authority on it.
It's exactly what I need.
Anyone else, Sam?
I do. I attended the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce meeting last Tuesday, and I have to tell you, it's been quite a joy to watch. With our help financially and our support, they have grown rapidly, actually. They, last weekend, they had their fifth annual wine stroll. They had over 18 local wineries. They had over 100 people attend. We now decided that we're going to go ahead and extend it all the way to the south, to the new businesses, all the way to Perry's. We'll have probably around 25 to 30 local wineries. So that's exciting for next year. We also have some dates to give to you. We're going to plan a North Magnolia Progressive Mixer on October the 5th, so please spread the news on that. We have, our membership has grown 25 percent since we got more involved, the city's gotten more involved, so that's exciting. We also have another ribbon-cutting on August the 3rd, the new reel, and so please invite friends and colleagues. And we also have a new meetup page for the chambers and Eventbrite for events, so we really are starting to reach more out to our community. And also on September the 23rd, throwing out a lot of dates to you, Spirit of Marin is going to happen. The chambers would like the council members to come and join them at their table, be their guests, and we are, soon will be involved with the Marin All Chambers Mixer Organization that is hosted by San Rafael. So we're on the, really on the right path to getting the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce out there and more involved. So it's exciting.
Yeah, I went to the wine stroll for about a half an hour.
How'd it go?
It was, I was only there from 5:00 to 5:30, but it was already getting full, so.
Good.
Yeah.
It was a success.
Anyone else? No?
Thank you.
So I just have a few things. Both Ann and I were invited to go to the super cool summer school by our Park and Recreation Director, Dick Whitley, and met up with the director there, and that was a nice, I've never seen that program before, so it was nice to have a tour of that. It's a very popular program that we run through Park and Recreation at Neil Cummins School, no, yeah, Neil Cummins School.
This year.
Second thing was, both Vice President, Vice Mayor Harof, I was thinking of something else at the moment, and I went to the discussion that the city manager reported on about the Bonner Bridge project and the North Magnolia mitigation. So I think that was pretty comprehensively covered. I'm not going to cover that, but mark your calendars for August 17th to be another presentation about that and probably a long meeting that day. And then lastly, I had the pleasure of having Mike Norton, Captain Mike Norton, show me around the active shooter training that was going on last week. I planned to be a victim, but they didn't need anybody. But it was very nice to see our law enforcement and fire working together and practicing at Redwood High School, and you probably saw it on TV, because it was broadcast as a KTVU channel, but it was very professionally done, and I appreciated being able to have a tour from Captain Norton himself, so thank you for that. Great, so now we're on to public comment. Oh.
I did forget one thing, and all these mentions of Captain Norton reminded me. CMPA is going to host National Night Out at both of its stations on August 2nd from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and they're going to do it, I think, as kind of a block party format, so really want to encourage folks to go over there. I know, hot dogs, jump house, all kind of stuff, right, Mike?
When is it?
August 2nd.
You want to come say anything about it? Sorry, Madam Mayor, I just, I was so focused on Magnolia, I forgot about this.
Always date, you take good notes.
Pretty much, we put it out to the neighborhoods to throw their own block parties, and we didn't get a lot of responses, so we had also planned to, at our San Anselmo and Larkspur stations, to host our own block party. So yeah, there will be, Fire Department will be there with a fire truck, we'll have our police car, our motorcycle, a jump house. We're going to do like, try and do a Pokemon Go treasure hunt with an officer, so I think that'll be the biggest incentive. And yeah, I think we're going to have some hot dogs, and it's really just a great opportunity to come down, meet some firefighters, meet some police, ask us anything you want, any tough questions with what's going on in the nation right now. We're open to answer anything and hopefully meet a lot of good citizens.
Great.
What time does it start?
6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on August 2nd.
Okay. And where is it? And where is it held?
It's going to be...
San Anselmo, Larkspur.
It's right in the parking lot of our big station in Larkspur or right on the lawn of Town Hall in San Anselmo.
Great.
And they're also encouraging neighborhoods, if they want to hold block parties, to get together to do that, too.
Correct.
You had one more thing? Thank you.
Well, Mike's still up there. Hang on, Mike. Because this is just one of those nights where I'm remembering stuff all of a sudden.
It's okay.
At the last police council meeting, we presented the police council, the manager committee's decision that when Chief Cusmano steps down on September 1st to assume his role as town manager in Corder Madera, Captain Norton will be stepping in as the interim chief for the foreseeable future to guide the department. So, thank you, Mike, for taking on that challenge.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the support and we're looking forward to it.
Us, too.
Great. Okay. We're on to six, which is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on matters which we have jurisdiction and that are not on the agenda tonight? You're welcome to come forward. No? All right. So, we have no public hearings tonight. We only have one business item, which is 8.1 to adopt the Shared Fire Services Agreement. Do we have a report on that?
Sorry, ma'am. We do.
What? I'm sorry?
Isn't this a public hearing item?
No, it's not a public hearing. It's a business item. It's a business item.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did they switch them around?
The agenda...
No, yeah. This one only needs to be adopted by the council. You can take public comment if you want, but it's not required to be at a public hearing.
Okay. I just remember seeing it as a public hearing item.
Oh. Well, the agenda that I have came out, the first one, and it is under eight, under business item, so...
Yeah, we had a revision on Monday, right?
I don't think so. Did we?
Is that a different... This was on the, I think, on the consent calendar, was there? No? One of your consent... When we published the agenda on Friday, one of the consent items, the agenda, the attachments were out of order.
Right.
So, we had to reconfigure them. So, I'll...
So, Larry?
Okay, we're good.
We're good? Okay.
This is, in a sense, a follow-up item because the council, you all attended the joint meeting with the town of Corder Madera and its council that we had at the community center in Corder Madera to present to you the significant step in the efforts we've been making to bring our fire department and the Corder Madera Fire Department together. As you know, we've been working with Corder Madera for some time to explore different options that would realize greater efficiencies, perhaps save money, definitely improve service. Those have been sort of our goals all along in terms of looking at things with Corder Madera. As the council has had the benefit from other presentations, you know that both departments have been running at less, what we would consider less than optimal levels for some time to sort of get by with some of the fiscal challenges we've had and then the economies of scale are difficult at both our sizes. Most of those reductions in what we're doing have occurred at the administrative and command staff levels. We've... Both departments have kept those levels fairly thin over the last several years in order to make sure there were still appropriate levels of firefighters and paramedics out there on the streets. And that, as the council heard, has been taking a toll on both departments in terms of their performance because someone has to do those tasks. So, you either have a handful of, or in our case, one administrative person doing quite a lot of work and probably in all likelihood delegating some of that work down to folks who have field responsibilities. And so, that's been happening in both agencies. And as we consider what we're going to do moving forward and we've looked at how to run at a better and more efficient level, one of the things that we've determined and have presented to you at this joint meeting with the full analysis is that one command staff working together will be tremendously beneficial to both communities. And so, at this time, what we're asking you and have in front of you is an item to approve an agreement with the town of Corder Madera that will allow us to jointly staff one command. We'll have one chief, we'll have a layer of battalion chiefs, we'll share a fire marshal responsibility, we'll share an administrative assistant. At this time, because this is sort of an interim step while we continue to work on something larger and more permanent, the way this is being proposed, the model that we're using, is that each agency is providing some of the staff into the mix. The individual... The individuals who are participating in the joint command are still employees of their respective agencies, but they will have operational responsibilities that cross both departments. And we think that's a good step at this time to capture these operational efficiencies without creating layers of legal complication that might make it difficult for us as we try to move forward to something more permanent. So, this has been drafted, looked at by both the city attorney in Larkspur, town attorney in Corder Madera, and has also been vetted throughout the organization with labor and the individuals involved. We think this is a great first step. The presentations the council knows that we provided to you at the joint meeting, we went into quite a bit of detail about our longer-term goals. And moving forward from this, we will be continuing to progress along a path that we think may lead to having one agency, probably in the format of a joint powers authority, very similar to what the Central Marin Police Authority or its predecessor, the Twin Cities Police Authority, looked like. We aren't there yet. There's still a lot of issues and questions to resolve and there's a lot of dialogue to have with individual councils, with the councils together, with the public. But we feel this is a very healthy first step. And in fact, as you know, with my direction and town manager Dave Bracken's direction, we have been sharing chief shirts on a more informal basis for some time now and we've been sharing some other command positions. This formalizes that sharing and makes it clear how that's going to work going forward. We did make one change based on feedback at the joint meeting and that was to be a little more clear in what we're reporting to you in the staff report about timetables to make sure this is equitable cost-wise. Because right now, we're just sort of saying it should kind of wash out between us each providing personnel and resources. But if we find that on a true cash basis, the disparities get significant, then we'll report that out with some way to address it when that comes to pass. So, that, Madam Mayor, I'm going to turn it back to you.
Thank you.
Available for questions. Chief Shirts is here, too.
Great. So, for the benefit of those in the audience or who were unaware, the last meeting, which was in July, July 6th, the city council of Larkspur and the town council of Corder Madera met jointly and had a very long presentation, about three hours, from Jim Irving and Chief Todd Cusmano about this process. So, if people are curious about what that meeting was about, it'll be available on the video. It also was an opportunity for all 10 council members to ask a lot of detailed questions and this is the follow-up to that. So, a lot of the questions have been asked. If you're wondering in the few minutes ahead of time, ahead, that we won't be asking detailed questions and you're curious about them, they were all filmed at that time, the July 6th meeting. So... But let's begin. Anybody have any additional questions for Dan? Go ahead, Dan.
You mentioned, your expression was, "Things will work out in the wash." Does that mean that you think that the... You're talking about fiscal?
We want to... We will be monitoring how much each agency's spending, not just on the command, but also sharing of overtime between the agencies. And our anticipation is that each agency will end up putting in similar amounts to the joint responsibilities. But if there was a disparity that we felt was inequitable, we will address it.
In attachment... I have a question about it. I'm going to identify an error, a place in the document.
Okay.
Attachment to page... Page two. Number four, overtime costs, compensation and reimbursement. Are the rates anywhere... Mentioned anywhere that are referenced in that?
Page two of the Shared Services Agreement Amendment.
Item number...
Four. Overtime costs, compensation and reimbursement. It references rates and describes a methodology, in essence, in there where...
The idea behind that is...
Microphone, please. Thanks.
The idea is that since the employees are remaining with their own agency.
Yeah.
Those are the rates that will be paid.
I get it. My question, are the rates comparable?
They are on a total compensation...
I think he can't hear you. Hold. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Yeah. There you go.
On a total compensation basis, they are reasonably close. They are not perfectly similar, but they are reasonably close.
But my question is in the context of neighborhoods closest to... Larkspur neighborhoods that may be closest to Corder Madera's dispatch or, you know, their station. Say, Larkspur neighborhoods incur the need to have a lot of Corder Madera overtime apply, you know, or there are a lot of paramedic calls, et cetera, and stuff like that. Is that a... Is there a scenario here where things could get out of...
Completely... No. It's completely comparable.
Okay.
Calls for service are very similar throughout all of the regions in both the town and the city. It's... And it's what we do anyway. Even before we started to do this, Larkspur engines respond to Corder Madera neighborhoods. Corder Madera engines respond to Larkspur neighborhoods on an automatic basis. It's really not changing anything with that, with respect to that.
So, you think there's a...
And also, I might just add that if we're looking at what the potential impact is on another agency from the neighboring town, we are already co-staffing fire equipment anyway. So, the impact is being distributed already as we speak.
Thank you.
Sure.
Dan, have you met with Lafco yet?
The executive officer of Lafco was out of town, so I am actually meeting with him on Friday.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. And are we going... Do you foresee we're going to have another joint meeting in three months? I wasn't too clear on that.
I didn't... We didn't set a timetable for when a joint meeting of both councils will be. I think the anticipation is that working through the joint committee that you have, we will hold some public meetings at that level first as we work through specific issues. Yeah, that's actually what we did for the... When we were working with San Anselmo, it's a little easier in terms of moving the process along to pick specific topics, vet them with the ad hoc committee in a public... And have the public available to come... They can come into that meeting, get through some of that. Because some of those meetings, we get pretty deep into the weeds. And so, it lets us get into that level of minutia, move that process forward so that we can have the bigger policy discussions with the joint council meeting. And so, I think until we have that process mapped out time-wise, we don't have a specific date for the next joint meeting of both councils. As you know, if everything went perfectly, we'd love to put whatever proposal is... Comes to fruition in front of you in time to implement it for the next calendar year. There's no... There's nothing requiring that. That's a self-imposed deadline because you want to keep this process moving. So, I just want to be clear, I'm not sure it was clear at the joint meeting, there's no outside entity forcing that upon us. And in fact, if the Lafco requirements are more significant than we hope they are, that may dictate some of the timeline.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Has Corder Madera's town council taken this step?
I think they did last night.
Thank you.
Yes, Larry?
I think the other thing that potentially is a long lead-time item is the Senate approval of the Public Employees Pension Reform Act. So, you know, is that like in front of Senator McGuire's office or have we gotten to the point where we can get that, you know, moving along?
We haven't... We haven't specifically made the request. We've been talking at staff levels with both legislative folks and, more importantly, CalPERS. Because you really, if you take an item through the legislature to facilitate this, you want CalPERS blessing it. So, what's nice is the CalPERS staff is aware that this type of activity is something to encourage.
Yeah, it's already been done.
Yeah. So, they have people who understand what we're asking and are giving us guidance and that's been really helpful.
Okay.
Any other questions or clarifications for either Dan or for Scott? No? Well, it sounds like we still remain with full consensus about moving forward with this, which we were at the last meeting. So, I think that will be sort of our direction is to say that we are in agreement of adopting the shared fire services and keep going ahead with it. Great. Yes?
So, you need a motion?
Yeah, is there a reservation?
Yeah, we do need to... We do need to adopt the... Yes.
Why am I off my game tonight? I'm calling you the vice president.
I think we all are.
I like the vice president's...
It's summer.
I'd be happy to make the motion.
I think I've been watching enough of the RNC convention. It's gotten me... All right. Go ahead.
I'd like to move adoption of Resolution Number 4816 authorizing execution of an agreement between the town of Corder Madera and the city of Larkspur for shared fire services.
I'll second the motion.
Terrific. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No. Great. There you go. So, just a reminder, we don't have a meeting August 3rd and our next meeting is August 17th and it's at 5:30 because we'll be having a joint meeting with the library board at 5:30 until 6:30. And then we'll have a very long night that night. We're planning on some long presentations, so just plan in advance for that.
Great.
And I'll take a motion to adjourn.